All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's come to order please. Good evening. My name is Edward Finley. And with me this evening are Commissioners Bryant E. Beatty, Susan W. Raven, and Tenoa D. Brown Blanck. I now call for hearing document number E. 7, Sub. 1026, which is the application of Duke Energy Carolina's LLC for adjustment of rates and charges applicable to electric utility service in North Carolina. On February 4, 2013, Duke filed an application for adjustment of rates and charges applicable to electric utility service in North Carolina and supporting direct testimony of several witnesses. By its application, Duke requests authority to increase its rates and charges to produce annual additional overall revenues in North Carolina of approximately $446 million, an increase of approximately 9.7 percent of our current revenues. In support of this requested increase, Duke states that over 93 percent of its request is to recover $3.8 billion in capital investments for plant modernization, environmental compliance, and other capital additions since its 2011 general rate case. Other reasons Duke cites for the requested increase include creation of a storm reserve, enhancement to vegetation management and costs related to the eventual retirement of nuclear plants, as well as costs to comply with nuclear regulations related to cybersecurity and Fukushima-related requirements. Duke has also requested to reinstate the company's coal inventory rider because, as the company explains, a combination of very low natural gas prices and mild winter weather has resulted in less frequent dispatch of coal-generating units to supply salons, resulting in coal inventory levels which are temporarily in excess of historical average. Duke proposes a rider of .0331 cents per kilowatt hour, including grocery seat stacks and regular delivery fees for all customer classes. This rider amount will recover approximately $18.3 million over a 12-month period, in addition to the $446 million requested that is no good of. On March 4, 2013, the Commission issued its order to schedule investigation and hearings, suspending proposed rates, establishing intervention, and testimony dates and discovery guidelines, and required public notice. An evidentiary hearing has been scheduled in Raleigh beginning July 8, 2013 to hear the witnesses. The parties and several hearings have been scheduled across the state for the purpose of receiving testimony from public witnesses. That is the purpose of the hearing here this evening. Interventions of parties have been filed and granted for Carolina Industrial Group for Fair Utility Rates III, Carolina Utility Customers Association, Inc., the Kroger Company, the Commercial Group, the North Carolina Sustainable Energy Association, the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and the North Carolina Waste Awareness and Reduction Network. Several statements of position and local government resolutions have been received and filed in the office of the General Clerk's office. This brings us up to the hearing before us tonight in compliance with the requirements of the State Ethics Act. I remind all members of the Commission of their duty to avoid conflicts of interest and regard whether any member of the Commission has a known conflict of interest with respect to matters coming before us this evening. There appear to be no conflicts, and we will proceed, and I will call upon the parties to announce their grievances beginning with the hour.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robert Kayler appearing on behalf of Duke Energy Carolina.
Good evening, Mr. Assistant Attorney Bob Yollum, who is the Legal Division of the Public Staff Representing the Using and Consuming Public.
All right, are there matters to be considered before the hearing of testimony this evening?
We would like to make an open statement, Mr. Chairman.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, Duke has requested the opportunity to make an open statement. This is basically to sort of let you know what their faults are for the bottom of this case. It is not evidence in the case. It can't be considered by the Commission when it deliberates. It's primarily for them to tell you their view for the start of the case. So, Mr. Kayler, if you'll let us know who's going to make that opening statement.
Our area manager, Lisa Levin, will come forward next.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Lisa Levin. I'm the new district manager for the Duke Energy in Western North Carolina. I grew up in this community. I attended Franklin High School, went away to college, and then came back after graduation. I love this mountain, these mountains, this area that I live in, and I'm proud to work for Duke Energy for the last 26 years. On behalf of this community, those of us who live and work here, it's a pleasure to have members of the Commission here with us this evening. I also look forward to hearing from some of our neighbors who are here, with community leaders, friends, and neighbors who are here tonight. There's a theme that quickly emerges, and that is, when I share with folks the challenges of an aging electrical system, increasing stringent environmental regulations, there's an understanding why we need to make investments in our electrical system. I like to prepare our modernization program to the decision to buy a new car. Imagine trading in your 1940s Plymouth for a brand-new electric vehicle. The hybrid can go further on a tank of gas, needs fewer repairs, and will drive you into the future. With state-of-the-art technology, a hybrid is cleaner and kinder to the environment. It's the new car you can count on. At Duke, we're replacing our old coal units built in the mid-1900s with new, more efficient natural gas and clean coal technologies. These state-of-the-art facilities burn less fuel and generate more electricity. The rate request is about paying for the new investments we have made to serve our customers for decades to come, and I assure you that we are doing our part to manage our costs. Our plants, including our nuclear fleet, are among the highest performing in the nation. Our focus is on efficiency. For 13 consecutive years, our nuclear capacity factor exceeded 90 percent. For the past five years, we have maintained the lowest nuclear operating cost per megawatt hour in the country. That reduces costs to our customers. Well-run plants, you can count on. Our reliability ranks among the best in the region. We have realized approximately $89 million in savings for our customers in the Carolinas through joint dispatch of fuel purchase, combining our workforce and voluntary retirements. In fact, our request for additional funding is $26 million less because of the merger. Finally, as the new Duke Energy District Manager in the region, it's my job to make sure that we're a good neighbor. That means participating in local events, supporting local projects, and responding to the issues and concerns our customers face. Recreation and ecotourism are critical for the economic development in this region, and Duke partners in a variety of ways with Western North Carolina communities and businesses to support the regional economy. We actively support recommendations for enhanced public recreation, such as boating access areas, angler trails, and wildlife viewing areas. In working in conjunction with local stakeholders, we schedule recreational flows to accommodate water bathing, kayaking, and also wade and drift boat anglers. In fact, Duke Energy is a major sponsor of the nationally and internationally televised World Freestyle Kayaking Championships being held this fall, which will offer a unique opportunity to deraze the awareness of the Nantahale area. And I would also add that the cost of this event is being paid for by the Duke Energy shareholders and not ratepayers. And at the heart of any good relationship is communications. That's why many of us from Duke are here tonight. We want to listen to the concerns of the customers and, if possible, address those issues this evening. We have representatives here from our billing department, vegetation management, and customer service departments. So, thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Approving this rate increase for Duke allows the company to update its costs and deliver on its promises to customers today and for decades to come. Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner.
I have a note I'd like to explain. What is it? I'll speak very briefly. I'm Bob Yollum, a staff attorney with the Public Staff and the Legal Division. And here with me tonight, who you've already heard from standing at the back of the room, is Jack Floyd. He is an engineer in our electric division. So, the Public Staff is an organization that is separate from the Utilities Commission but works with the Utilities Commission. Our duty is to represent the using and consuming public. In this case and all other electric rate cases, as soon as the case was filed, we begin to investigate it very thoroughly and in detail in all aspects of the case. Our goal is to recommend to the Commission only the lowest amount of rate increase that the company is legally entitled to and no more. Mr. Floyd and I will be available after the hearing finishes in case you would like to discuss with us informally any questions that you have. We will file testimony about the middle of next month in which we state our position in detail and exactly how much of a rate increase we believe the company should have. It will be less than the amounts that they've asked for. And you can find that testimony in any other paper that's filed in the rate case by going to the Utilities Commission's website. They are all filed for the public to examine on that website. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's know a little bit what the procedure's going to be tonight. This is a court proceeding. We function as a court when we conduct a hearing such as this one. It's not like a public meeting in the sense of a town meeting or a homeowners association meeting. So, we're taking evidence. We have a court reporter here who's going to make sure that the witness's testimony is recorded. It becomes a record in this case. It will be evidence the Commission considers after it's turned on the evidence by the company and public staff witnesses and other intervening witnesses. And when the Commission sits down to deliberate, it will take into account the testimony that is given here tonight. Therefore, it's going to be necessary under state law that the witnesses be sworn on the Bible there. Of course, if you have some problem with that, you can affirm as an alternative. The testimony will be taken down, and so we ask that those in the audience not participate other than listening. You'll have your turn if you want to testify. We welcome you here and allow you to testify. Often, you've come with a statement that you want to make, and somebody else has gotten up in front of you and said practically the same thing. It's unnecessary for you to completely repeat what the witness in front of you has said. You can adopt what they say and add something to it if you would like. We welcome you here, and we will proceed and take the testimony. So, Mr. Yollum, if you'll carry forth with us.
Joe D. Decker.
I'd like to affirm.
You saw me affirm the testimony about getting this case included the whole truth.
Yes, I did. My name's Joe Decker. I live at 1612 Panther Creek Road, Palmer, North Carolina. I have a small business there. We have six meters on the property. I have 33 years of power line experience. Some of it was with Duke, some of it was progress energy. So, I'm pretty familiar with all the things. And I apologize for my dress. I'm just a common working man. Actually, I'm a working poor man. But I wore one of my reminder hats. I don't know if you can see that or not, but that's a little sideways E, and it says M-Ron on it. And I've had that hat for a while, and I keep it by. But I was curious how much of the power that's generated in the southern states is, they've upgraded the transmission lines so they can wheel the power out to other states. And I was wondering how much money is spent on upgrading transmission lines in other states where our power companies, it's called wheeling. And they'll take a plant here in the south where the EPA, they might be able not to do it out in California what they do here in the south, and the wages are a little bit suppressed in the south, and they can do a lot more here, and they build a plant here, and then they'll wheel the power to California, Ohio, and different places. And as it stands, they're a monopoly, and the monopoly got bigger, and they got a guaranteed profit. I'm not sure if it's maybe 10 percent, 13 percent, somewhere in that category. I'm not real sure about that. But with that said, my power bill, I've just got a small little campground, 30 little sites. People pay $18 to put up a tent. My power bill last July was $1,000. Now, you calculate, I got camped, and only on the weekend do we have, you know, 4th of July, of course, would be full, but it's hard to make it. It's hard to make it. And I'll just close with this little bit here. "If you see the poor oppressed in a district and just and rights denied, do not be surprised at such things, for one official is eyeed by a higher one, and over them both are others higher still. The increase from the land is taken by all; the king himself profits from the field. Whoever loves money never has money enough; whoever loves wealth is never satisfied with this income." Thank you.
Mr. President, let me ask you one question. What was the source that you read?
Please, yes.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Mr. Decker, your questions about the wheeling and the wholesale power market and the profit and that type of thing, we just want to hear your testimony. We heard what your position is, and Mr. Newton here and Mr. Barclay here from Duke Energy, they're going to be available to answer those types of questions for you. So, if you'll just stick around or let them answer those questions for you, they will go try to do that.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what testimony you really want, what would help my cause, because I'm not, I'm not sure, because we were just here just, what, a year and a half ago or two years? I don't know. My timeframe just seems to run off. Wasn't it just the?
We heard you that you don't want to have to pay any increased rates. I think that's the point you were making.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Scott. Mr. Scott, would you state your name, how, what year it's 20?
How far? Do you solemnly affirm that in this case we approve the whole proof and not enough?
I do.
Mr. Scott, would you state your name and address?
Yes, I'm Bob Scott. I'm an Alderman for the town of Franklin, but I'm here speaking for myself and a number of people who have called me today who, I guess you might say, are constituents. First off, I want to say that I have no problem whatsoever with Duke's service. I know personally a great number of their local employees. This is not my concern tonight. Service has nothing to do with what I'm here to talk about. And I hope that I'm not breaking the evidentiary rules, but what I have are a number of concerns tonight. And my real concerns are not with so much the rating increases as it is with the corporate end of Duke Energy. I am concerned for our residents. We have a high unemployment rate, and all the calls I've had today were for people down on their lot, and they are very adamant that they do not want to see Duke's rates increase. And I have to side with them on that. One of my main concerns has, and I would like for this to come out to the public staff's investigation while looking into Duke, one of the things that I'm concerned about is the political contributions that Duke Energy has made. It seems that that is a rather well-kept secret, and I think it is a matter of public concern and is a matter for the public staff and the Northern Utilities Commission to look into because Duke Energy is a public utility, and in many ways that makes us all somewhat of a part. We have no place else to turn for power electricity. Needmore project. One of the things that I was concerned about was how Duke Energy, through its impressive land company, sold 4,400 acres of land in the area we know as Needmore to the Nature Conservancy for $19 million. That land had once belonged to private citizens who thought that a dam would be built there when our Corps purchased it through Nantahale Power and Light Company years ago. This is just a concern that I have, was that was $19 million that did not come back to the ratepayers. Those were my concerns. I'm also concerned about whether or not Duke is putting any political contributions into the privatization or to removal of some of the technical people from the Utilities Commission. I'm concerned about that, that the Utilities Commission, which represents the using public, could become politicized. I would like to have a few answers on that. Here's another one that I am concerned about, is the compensation packages for top Duke people. The CEO of Duke, for the past three years, his compensation package has been around $8.7 million for three years. They pay the, who was going to be the CEO of Duke Energy, Mr. Rogers, Jim Rogers, they were going to pay him in the neighborhood $20-something million, but he only worked two days for Duke Energy, yet he still got paid that amount of money and was paid $16,000 a day for each of the two days he worked for Duke. I'm a little concerned about this.
I may ask Mr. Johnson you're referring to there.
I'm sorry, Bill Johnson. Did I say Rogers? Thank you for correcting me. You're absolutely right. This is not a speech I'm holding here. This is just some background information. So, don't be concerned. Don't have to put up with me any longer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Scott, you mentioned political contributions. Do you understand that political contributions are not paid by ratepayers, they're paid by shareholders?
I understand that, sir, but I don't agree with you.
And do you understand that the compensation package for Mr. Johnson is also not paid by ratepayer put on shareholders?
I do understand that, sir.
Thank you.
But the ratepayers, well, I'm not in a position to argue, but I would if you would I can be pretty radical at times.
You've been not anything but radical. We appreciate your comments. If anybody has any questions, Mr. Scott. I will say, Mr. Scott, that the things that you list there are the types of things that the public staff will examine and look into.
I know that, sir, and I wish you the best, and welcome to Franklin even though you did bring your ringtone.
It's nice to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alfrum Fradman.
If you would, put your left hand on the Bible there and raise your right hand, please. The solemnest word of the testimony about giving this case the whole proof and not enough to itself, your honor.
Would you state your name and address? Put the Bible up.
Avram Friedman, 1446 Dillsborough Road in Silver, North Carolina.
And you are the director of the Canary and Co. Business.
That's right.
Okay, please, write your citation.
Good evening, Commissioners, and welcome back to Franklin again. I'd like to begin by reminding the Commissioners, as Commissioner Finley has already done, that the statement you all heard from the Duke Energy representative at the beginning of this hearing was not delivered on the road, unlike the rest of the testimony you were hearing this evening. I would hope that unsubstantiated corporate public relations garble will be completely disregarded in your deliberations.
Detonation garble.
In your deliberations on utility rates, that has such a profound effect on the lives of real people. These hearings are becoming an annual ritual, as Duke Energy repeatedly asks for rate decreases to finance new power plants and infrastructure to implement policies outlined in its Integrated Resource Plan. The predictable self-perpetuating spiral continues. Current policies promote more and more energy consumption, requiring more and more energy production capacity, requiring higher and higher energy rates. Ratepayers are being forced to finance this wasteful cycle because of a provision of 2007 Senate Bill 3, muscled through the North Carolina General Assembly in 2007 by Duke Energy lobbyists, ending a 25-year ban on charging North Carolina ratepayers for construction work in progress on new power plants. Without this provision, it's doubtful that Duke would be pursuing its current path because they wouldn't be able to finance these power plants. Apparently, financial institutions understand that new coal, natural gas, and nuclear power plants are much too risky propositions to invest in. So, here in North Carolina, electrical ratepayers are being forced to play the role of investors, the possibility of realizing future profit. They are being forced to take on the risky debt themselves and pay higher and higher energy bills on an annual basis, unless that is the Utilities Commission, the Attorney General, or the North Carolina Supreme Court intercedes. As we all know, the Supreme Court has already overturned the rate increase granted to Duke Energy last year. Maybe it's time for the Utilities Commission to pursue a different way of doing things. I want to thank the Utilities Commission for recently rejecting Duke Energy's 2012 Integrated Resource Plan as incomplete and lacking adequate information. The 19 questions you required Duke Energy to answer were very relevant and timely. The first question you asked goes right to the heart of the matter. Would the proposals encompass, within 2011 House Bill 135, result in lower electricity costs for Duke Energy's properties? 2011 H. 135, incidentally, is identical to 2013 House Bill 401, except we had more co-sponsors in the General Assembly this time than in 2011. Those proposals would require the creation of inverted tiered block rate structures, the establishment of an energy efficiency bank for low-interest loans to customers for efficiency and renewable energy projects, and a tax incentive for the purchase of energy star-rated electrical appliances. Actually, this question is an exercise in tautology. It's asking if customers were unable to use much less energy through gains in efficiency, would it lower their energy costs? Of course it would. Similar programs have been established in other states that have already proven the obvious on this. To further develop this idea, I'd like to point to the state of Hawaii that recently established a similar program in which a bank was created to issue low-interest loans that will be administered through monthly utility bills to electrical ratepayers. This is virtually identical to the proposal in North Carolina House Bill 401, in which the ratepayer will realize a reduced monthly energy bill from day one, including the loan payment for energy efficiency and/or solar energy project investments. The ratepayer wins, the bank wins, public health wins, and the environment wins as we dramatically reduce energy consumption and greenhouse gas emissions on a statewide basis. Thousands of jobs will be created in the field of energy efficiency, rooftop solar energy installation and maintenance, cogeneration system design and implementation in heat-producing industries, and all the positive economic spinoffs associated with the increase in instruction, plumbing, electrical, architectural, and engineering trades. An inverted tiered block utility rate billing system combined with an energy efficiency bank to issue low-interest long-term loans will benefit existing industry in North Carolina as well. Amory Lovins, who has been hired by many Fortune 500 companies, including members of the utility industry, to increase their profits through improvements in efficiency, once said that those who are concerned with the cost of energy efficiency are confusing the plus and the minus signs. Improving efficiency brings higher profits, not costs. It's the safest investment you can make, guaranteed to yield profit. In the system outlined in House Bill 401, industries already operating at maximum efficiency will benefit from lower-tiered electrical rates. Those industries that are currently wasting energy will benefit from low-interest loans to achieve maximum efficiency, resulting in lower electrical rates, lower electrical usage, and higher profits. This isn't magic. It isn't pie in the sky. It's based on the very real value of energy saved and the capital created by this process. Wasted energy is a resource North Carolina has in abundance. Per capita, we use twice as much energy as those living the same lifestyle in Western Europe and Europe, and three times as much as Japanese people. It's not because we have more or do more, it's because we use energy less efficiently. It's time we started mining this resource. It's encouraging that the Utilities Commission rejected Duke Energy's IRP and used the proposals outlined in the Efficient and Affordable Energy Rates Bill in questioning their lack of vision and consideration in their current plans. I urge you to continue to think along those lines and begin the process of restructuring utility rates rather than raising rates that would serve only to implement the IRP projected. Thank you, and I'm submitting a list of documents that I have on the statement.
Do you want to have a list of documents, exhibit number one, if you can find this card? If you don't, we'll have it marked and we'll see if we can have it. Have it, of course.
Yes, sir.
Friedman, are you a customer of Duke Energy?
I am.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman, appreciate you coming tonight. This is only sort of the testimony about giving this case with the whole person, not the other person, so.
Yes, sir.
Would you state your name and address, put the record, please?
Yes. My name is Sutton Bacon, my address is 13077 Highway 19 West, Bryson City, North Carolina 28713.
And on the sign-up sheet, you identify yourself as CEO of NOC.
Yes, I'm the NanaHala Outdoor Center.
Okay, please proceed with your statement.
Thank you, sir. My name is Sutton Bacon, I'm the CEO of the NanaHala Outdoor Center. We are one of the largest businesses in western North Carolina, employing 250 full-time and over 1,000 seasonal employees, right here, right over the mountain here, in Bryson City. We're also one of Duke Energy's largest private ratepayers in the region. We spend over $150,000 per year purchasing electricity from Duke Energy. And I'm here today to make three points, none of which directly address the merits of such an increase, which will certainly impact NOC and our shareholders and our employees, just as normal and customary costs of business increases have impacted our fuel, food costs, retail merchandise, and transportation expenditures. Instead, I'm here to talk, make three points. One, describe the economic impact of whitewater recreation on the NanaHala. Two, articulate Duke Energy's role and investment in our local public lands and waterways. And three, issue a challenge for the future for Duke Energy. First, like so many rural economies, our region has suffered immensely through the recession. You've heard it from speakers tonight, we continue to suffer from the loss of traditional manufacturing jobs to overseas outsourcing, our housing and construction industries have collapsed. Furthermore, 88% of Swain County is owned by the federal government, with the great Smoky Mountains National Park and NanaHala National Forest. And one might say that these large federal land holdings further exacerbate our economic condition, diminishing our local tax revenue base. However, our public lands and waterways boast a wealth of recreational opportunities in our pathway, the pathway to a new and growing economic prosperity, one rooted in the value of outdoor recreation and experiencing these places directly. And as long as the health and stewardship of our public lands and waters are maintained, these jobs will never go away, and our economy will become an experience-based economy and not an extraction-based economy. In fact, researchers at Western Carolina University recently quantified the economic impact of whitewater recreation on the NanaHala. It provides $85 million of annual economic impact to the seven counties west of Asheville. It supports and directly employs over 1,000 full-time jobs, and it generates almost $12 million in local, state, and federal taxes. Which brings me to point number two, none of this economic activity and civic revitalization would be possible without Duke Energy and their steadfast support of our industry, public recreation, and rural economic development. Duke is a collaborator with the NanaHala Board Association, works with local businesses, outfitters, Swain County, United States Forest Service on recreational use of the NanaHala to maximize the visitor experience as well as economic impact. In addition, Duke provides water in the NanaHala over 300 days per year, as well as the Tuckassee River for public recreation to provide that economic impact. In addition, Duke provides releases on the upper NanaHala and the west half of the Tuckassee River, which brings thousands of voters from around the country to visit western North Carolina and spend money in our communities. In addition, Duke has provided free river access points on river access. In addition, Duke shareholders have set aside marketing funds to promote our great lakes and great rivers of the Great Smokies in support of a region-wide initiative to create a national Blue Waste Trail right here in western North Carolina. And in addition, Duke shareholders are major sponsors of the 2013 World Freestalk Kayaking Championships, an event that will happen this September in a time of year when our region desperately needs the tours of, it'll bring tens of thousands of spectators to our region, host 500 athletes and coaches from 40 to 50 countries, and create a lasting legacy for our region as a world championship destination. And finally, to 9.3, I'll offer a challenge to Duke Energy. With the recent merger with Progress Energy changing undoubtedly the complexity and challenges of your organization, I ask you to please continue to balance all of the diverse needs of your ratepayers and the many voices heard tonight in your thoughtful consideration of the rate increase and the impacts thereof. And please remember, your charge and lasting legacy is major catalyst for rural economic development here in western North Carolina, and continue providing outstanding and generous support of our economy indeed. Thank you.
Mr. Bacon, let me ask you one question. The Outdoor Center depends on releases from an NanaHala reservoir for scheduling events, is that right?
That's correct.
And you've had cooperation from Duke Energy?
We have. I couldn't ask for a better collaboration partnership with Duke Energy representatives on providing recreational opportunities in the NanaHala.
Ken Murphy.
This is only sort of the testimony about giving this case with the whole person, not the other person, so.
Would you state your name and address, put the record, please?
My name is Ken Murphy, my address is Field Box 190, Franklin, North Carolina.
On the sign-up sheet, you indicated that you are a customer of generation, you own your own generation facilities?
That's correct. As I'll indicate, I have both solar and generation.
My page, please proceed.
I'm here as a participant in Duke Energy's customer-owned generation program, and I'm not otherwise intending to address the rate increase that is the subject of the hearing. I retired here from the Atlanta area, and my wife and I built a home here about two years ago. We're interested and supportive of both energy conservation and alternative energy sources. Our home is LEED certified through the U.S. Green Building Council and is an energy star home under guidelines set by the U.S. EPA. Consequently, we're on the Duke Energy rate schedule for energy star-rated homes. Our home has a 1 kilowatt rated wind turbine system and on the little bit of south-facing roof that we have, 1.44 kilowatt rated solar panel system. Both are connected to the Duke Energy Carolina system on a net meter basis. That is to say, we use the energy we generate and put any excess back onto the energy grid, and we receive a credit from Duke Energy at the same rate as the energy we purchase. I must admit that I did not find the written guidelines for customer-owned generation to be that easy for the layman to understand and decipher, primarily because of cross-references to riders and schedules that are not generally read. Fortunately, however, I found that both the North Carolina Utilities Commission and Duke Energy personnel were very helpful. In particular, as it relates to this hearing, my builder and I both found Duke's smart energy specialists to be supportive, responsive, and knowledgeable. Our system implementation required that Duke Energy inspect our electrical equipment and replace our existing meter with a bidirectional meter, so that we can measure both electricity going in from the grid and to the grid. Duke Energy field personnel not only completed these items on a timely basis, but were always friendly and considerate in carrying out their work. In sum, it's been my experience that with respect to customer-owned generation, I've found that Duke Energy not only talked the talk, but also walked the walk.
Questions, Mr. Murphy?
No question.
Let me ask you, Mr. Murphy, you, how long have you had your solar arrays on the house?
We've had the solar arrays for just under, well, just over a year.
Over the course of the year, are you a net buyer or net seller?
We are a net buyer.
Adam Bigelow.
I'd like to open.
This is only sort of the testimony about giving this case with the whole person, not the other person.
Hi, Derek. Would you state your name and address, put the record, please?
Happily. My name is Adam Bigelow, and I live at 284 Keenan Street, southern North Carolina, and I am a ratepayer Duke Energy customer.
Thank you.
I would like to welcome the Commissioners back to Franklin, North Carolina. Glad you guys get to be here in the beautiful springtime here in southern Appalachia. I love living where I live, and I'm very thankful for living here. I've been here 20 years, I hope to be here two times that, if I'm lucky, knock on wood. I appreciate having electricity at my house. I like to have my beer cold, I like to have my food preserved, I like to be able to read at night without having to go every hunchling with it. And not only that, but I appreciate the large number of people in my community that work for Duke Energy, who work and do good work, and are friendly and considerate, and help people out with getting their solar arrays hooked up, and also providing for the recreational releases on the many rivers around here. If we were here for a rate increase of approximately 14 cents per kilowatt hour, or 20 cents per kilowatt hour, that we'll be going to pay for upgrading our grid to a smart grid and building solar panels and solar energy programs, and building wind energy programs to work in concert, neither of which are baseload power, we can't just turn a switch and make the sun shine at midnight, or we can't turn a switch during the doldrums and cause the wind to blow. But with our new science and our abilities to maximize efficiency, we have the capability of combining simp wind and solar, plus the existing large-scale hydrological powered generation, add in small-scale, non-centralized microhydro distribution, non-centralized solar energy generation, non-centralized wind energy generation, so that we can actually generate electricity and use it close to where we're generating, instead of the large amount of loss in transmission lines. I would stand up here and say, please, increase my rates, because I would pay for that, just like I will pay for biodiesel fuel made in Nashville, North Carolina, which drove me over the mountain here today. And I will pay for organic produce, because that was grown by a friend of mine up the road, higher than the amount that I would pay for a conventional, I'm happy to do that. Luckily, I'm in a position to do so, but even when, those times when I've not been in the best financial position to do so, I still made those efforts. I ask that Duke Energy makes those efforts. But more importantly, I'm asking you as the Commissioner, that is a representative of me, as a citizen of these United States and this beautiful state of North Carolina, to not only deny the increase that's being asked here. Give no increase, please. The people living in western North Carolina, we can't afford an increase in our electric bill. We can't afford the electric bill right now. You gotta let it ride a month. In fact, I think I already got some money. You have to let it ride a month, so that you can maybe put fuel in your car, maybe pay for your prescription, or maybe pay for your childcare needs, or the many things. We're all struggling, we're all hurting right now financially. This is not the time to raise rates with 11.9% guaranteed profit and very healthy compensation packages. This is not the time to raise rates on the working people western North Carolina who don't have much. Luckily, we live in western North Carolina, we don't need much. A couple of clarifications. First off, I would like to affirm everything that Auburn Friedman said as my own testimony, and I will attempt to not repeat anything that he stated earlier. I probably won't have a hard time with that, because he does his research. So I am up here more of in an emotional state. And so I appreciate the work that Auburn Friedman does with the Canary Coalition to keep people in check, mostly large corporate powers. However, and I was about to address the off-the-record statement by Duke Energy, but I won't, because that's not part of the record. But what is part of the record was my previous speaker, two previous speaker comment, the gentleman who's the CEO of the NanaHala Outdoor Center, who was talking about all the good things that Duke Energy does. Wonderful access points in the rivers and lakes that Duke Energy is, has been doing, and I've used them. Along the Tuckassee, thank you, they're beautiful. You had to do it, it was part of the PERC agreement. It's in trade for licensing the rivers for 50 years, 50 years to make electricity. This is not something that Duke Energy did out of the kindness of their heart. In fact, they're a corporation, they don't have a heart. They're a business. They're made up of individual people within that corporations, and they all have a heart in blood pumping and stuff, but corporations itself doesn't. So that, I believe, was a misstatement and some PR grab, and I'm all in favor of good positive public relations, I think about myself all the time. I oppose the rate increase. I oppose the rate increase and the rider. We were just here, and they asked for 14 cents or some odd number of increase. And a lot of things I'm going to say tonight were the exact same things I said last time I faced you people, and I appreciate your forbearance in allowing me to repeat myself, as we all are repeating ourselves here as Duke Energy repeats themselves and asking for more money from the backs of the working poor western North Carolina. There are monopoly, there are foreign monopoly, there is a commission to keep them in check. That is your job. They're a business, a for-profit business. Their profit, the item that they sell is electricity. The way that they generate that electricity is causing, and one of the leading contributor to global climate change, global warming, toxic polluted rivers in western North Carolina, toxic polluted rivers and the coalfields. I am very lucky to live in western North Carolina, I'm equally lucky that we do not have coal seams running underneath us, because they would take the tops off of western ball and white ball and fill in the valley between it to go after 18-inch seam of coal that will provide power for another hour or two. We have better ways of doing things now. We have science, we have the technology, we don't need more time to look into it, it's off the shelf and ready to go. The gentleman speaking before me has wind and solar at his house. You know, he has a LEED certified home, I don't know the square footage, but if he has those generated capacities of almost 3 megawatts. Is that right? Then I would want to talk to him a little bit afterwards and see what ways we can do to improve his efficiencies, because I think that would be a benefit to him. But, you know, there would be no incentive for Duke to increase their efficiency, because if they were more efficient producing the electricity, if they, the way things are now, if they produce less of their product, they would sell less of that product and make less money for their shareholders, which would probably put them into a little trouble with some federal agencies, mostly just trying to provide a positive return for shareholders like is required for publicly traded companies and such. The effect on individuals will be very hard. It will hurt people, children, and families. One in six families, one in six people in western North Carolina are food insecure, one in four children. We can't afford a couple more dollars on our electric bill. We can't afford a couple hundred more dollars every year to pay for that. We can't. You know, I mean, I think a 14% reduction of their top 40 employees across the board might help balance that out, and, you know, we can run some numbers later if you want. Businesses can't afford it, small businesses here in western North Carolina, we don't have a lot of large-scale industry, we don't have a lot of things here in western North Carolina. And across North Carolina, there's pockets of it, large data centers and things like that, that the Duke Energy is hoping to bring in more of, because they're large users. We have the Cherokee Casino and Hotel there on the Quala boundary. I'm a musician, and I play music sometimes, and I was happened to be doing a gig for people high up in project management, and also being... people high up in project management and also being an energy conservative person, a conservative way, a conservationist, no, I'm a conservative, no, I'm a conservationist. I was talking with one of the project managers up there and I asked him, wow, I'd hate to see your power bill, and he said $750,000 a month for the casino and the hotel combined. And I know they don't pay the rate I do. So it's, you know, we're living well beyond our means. But small businesses can't afford a little bit of increase and it may cost individual jobs, it may cost services that small businesses will be able to provide to people. And a lot of us here in Western North Carolina would rather go to somebody we know to get work done than somebody we don't, or more importantly, a national chain corporation. I know I would. And I work in the area of nonprofits and we're struggling right now. Nonprofit organizations across North Carolina are facing all manner of financial cuts and threats to our ability to raise money. We have to have general operating expenses to keep going. Some of the groups I work with don't have offices, some do. But to keep our work going, which is involved in helping to feed people, we need to be able to have a reasonable electric bill. I mean, those are some of the largest expenditures, you know, some, maybe you find somebody who'll let you have office space, but you're not gonna find somebody that's gonna let you have free electricity to run your business. So this will hurt business, individuals and nonprofit organizations throughout North Carolina, and especially here in Western North Carolina where we're a little bit poorer and I kinda like that myself. The projection of increasing capacity needed to, for new construction of power plants, for an increase in the amount of use that residents of the North Carolina businesses are going to be using, I believe are false. I believe they're not real projections because they don't take into account increased efficiency. They don't take into account individuals stepping up and doing the best that we can to try to reduce our rates for our pocketbook and also to help protect the environment that we all share and that provides us the things that we like, like air and food and My personal thought is that the increase in capacity Duke Energy is trying to help offset the costs of with their rate increase is for out-of-state sales. We're in North Carolina, we need to protect the people of North Carolina from absorbing a cost that will lead to further profits and no reductions. They're not gonna come back next year or two years, the next time they're standing here, and say, hi, we're Duke Energy and we'd like to request a 3.9% reduction in our electricity rates. When is that gonna happen? It's gonna keep increasing and keep increasing. And they, as a business trying to make profit, are gonna try to keep increasing it and increasing it, and then taking that power and finding new ways to get rid of it, selling it out of state, selling it to South Carolina or other states, whereas the gentleman before me talked about wheeling it to some of the areas where it would cost more for them to make that electricity. We need to be reminded that Duke Energy doesn't just work here in North Carolina, they're all over the place. It does not match the need of North Carolina, but the real need right now and the projected need in the future, their rate increase does not match that. And there is no incentive for conservation. There is no incentive for me to be more conservative in my use of power because it seems like the less I use, the more I get charged. There is definitely no incentive for a business to use less power. And there is actually a disincentive for Duke Energy to be more efficient, to generate less electricity because they will make less money. And I'm not against people making money, I'm not against the way that our free trade markets work here locally and regionally and across the nation. We start getting into global things and that's a whole different world, but that, you know, that's not here. But we need to do things differently. We need to do things in a smart way and not just the status quo way we've been doing it, which is getting more and more people poor, fewer and fewer people rich, and at the cost of plants, animals, insects and everything. And I'm gonna close by saying that I'm a licensed North Carolina pesticide applicator with a forestry and general designation and an organic community gardener, and I keep my license so that pesticides are bad for you, but that I'm a license crazy if you're saying pesticides are bad for you. And the vegetation management strategies to keep the power lines clear from large trees are toxic and they're poisoning our children. Every time we drip pesticides into the waterway, it's poisoning our children. And the most benign one, the one that's okay with everybody, not the one that they use, they use one called Transline, and among other things in a cocktail, but like Roundup, you know, Parkinson's disease, brain injury study connecting. We need to do things differently, we know how. We don't need more studies, more data, we need to make the switch now. We can switch all of our electricity generation to renewable energy, switch our transportation to electric vehicles and in two fell swoops, similar to the work we did in the buildup to World War II when we caused our manufacturing to start building bombs and building tanks and building parachutes and all of the necessary things for that great war effort. We are in a time now where we need to switch the way we do things, the way we use electricity and energy, the way we generate it, and Duke Energy has that capability and they have no incentive to do so. Don't give them a rate increase. If I were gonna sell you a car and I wanted to take $2,000 in amount of that car, I would start the bidding at five grand. They're coming in asking for 14 cents, 14.9% rate increase. No, and they won't get that, but they need or want a seven or a six percent. And you'll give them that and then everybody will be happy because they didn't get the 14.9%. I ask you to give them zero, and I don't think it's within your power, but maybe you like a three percent reduction. Thank you.
Just on this way, the testimony about to give this case with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, John.
Yes, sir.
Would you state your name and address for the record please?
My name's Bill Crawford, I live at 16 Stone Brook Drive, Franklin. I'm speaking as an individual, but I'm a longtime member of the Western North Carolina Lions. I have some ambivalence about the rate hike. If raised, it might slow consumption of electricity. On the other hand, it might just enable Duke Energy to keep on using coal and nuclear. Can you imagine the real cost of coal if you factor in climate change costs? My greatest concern is that energy companies like Duke pay lip service to solar and wind and other renewable, non-carbon-producing sources of energy that are continuing to invest in coal and natural gas. There is no such thing as clean coal. Thank you.
Is there a question?
Joan Maki, 56 Main Time Road in Franklin, North Carolina. Just on this way, the testimony about to give this case with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, John.
Would you state your name and address for the record please? Joan Maki, 56 Main Time Road in Franklin, North Carolina. I wish to make a statement before I start. I'm hearing impaired, and this is the second meeting that I've been to that I probably could hear 25% of what was being said. I don't know if anybody else has this problem, but you need to be aware, that you need to make sure that the back and middle can hear what's being said. I'm in a very select position. I live in a passive solar house. I joined the wind energy program and I think they dropped me off of it because every month when I got the national statement, this is where I'm supposed to be, they use, and I'm way down here because we conserve everything. So I'm speaking more for the people of Megan County. I taught school here for 16 years, taught for a total of 34 years, and I'm seeing people in this community struggle, senior citizens who can't afford to pay for their medicine, that can't afford to pay for their food. And when I read the information on Duke's plan for meeting their customers' needs over the next two decades, I got seriously concerned. Number one, most of that power is coming from non-renewable sources that are polluting sources. And according to what I read, Duke is only requiring a 4.5% efficiency rate and only 2.5 or 2.25% of their power is coming from solar and wind energy. We need to do something about those numbers because if you work on those numbers, the rate increases wouldn't be needed. The other thing I'm concerned about is the way Duke sets their rate structures. It is not fair to charge big businesses less for their electricity and pass that cost on to small and medium businesses and residential customers. That's an unfair rate structure, my personal feeling. The other thing that, when you give these rate increases, if you think about it in a simplistic way, you just think, okay, my electrical bill's gonna be $15 more a month, just as a general number. What we're not thinking about are all the areas that are connected. Our schools here are broke. We're a million and a half dollars short. As a matter of fact, right now, our schools are running on a zero budget for the rest of this year. They can't afford more electrical charges. UPAD set up to the small and medium, even the large businesses, they're gonna pass it on to the consumers. The cost of goods is going to go up, cost of transportation's gonna go up. So it's not just that $15 or $20 a month that's coming out of my pocketbook and your pocketbook, it's all of the other increases that are going to be affected by that rate increase. I would like to ask you to remember that out of all 50 states, North Carolina has been hit the hardest economically. Every bit of research that I have done has said that across the board, we were hit harder and we are coming back slower. Given that information, how does it fit in for us to give a huge rate increase? The other part of the rate increase that concerns me is if I understood the figures correctly, Duke has asked for a 13.9% increase, but a 45% on basic service charges? If you own rental property or if you own a campground, that basic charge is going to run you into bankruptcy almost immediately because you can't pass that kind of increase on to your consumers. People here just can't pay it. And I hope that when you look at the figures and think about the people in Western North Carolina, that you will consider all of those things because stockholders buy stock to get income, to make money. Rate payers have to pay their bills every month in order to flip that switch to get that electricity. I am not a Duke Power stockholder, I wish I was, but I doubt that I could get enough money back to justify seeing the hurt that is coming to the senior citizens and the children and the public entities like the schools in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maki.
You said that you had a problem with your bill. Can you explain a little more about that?
Not a problem. I live in a passive solar house. My father-in-law was a Finnish immigrant and when he designed the house, he designed it so that it would be as efficient as possible. And I look, I have two floors that are over 1,500 square feet each, and then another floor that's 900 square feet, and my bill runs about $51 a month. That's for everything, heating, cooling, everything.
And did I understand you to say that something in regard to your house had appeared on the bill and its stock appearance?
I get a, I used to get from the Smart Energy Program, a monthly or bimonthly letter telling me where I was with my efficiency rating, and they just stopped coming. But every month that I got it, you know, here's the level that Duke Power said I should be using, and I was a good 35% below even average use.
Was that letter coming to you from Duke?
Yes.
And they discontinue that, what?
I think they just dropped me off the list.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Just on this way, the testimony about to give this case with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, John.
Yes, sir.
Would you state your changing address for the record please?
Shirley Chess, 1400 Lake Emory Road, Franklin. I'm here simply to represent all the other homeowners, small homeowners, retirees like myself, who resent our bills going up unnecessarily when we try very hard to keep our power usage down and be economical. I can echo everything that has been said here tonight, but I won't. Also, I think we can echo exactly what was said over a year ago at the last meeting. We must, we're most proud to a higher degree than it is tonight. I would ask, as a small homeowner, retiring, that you consider carefully what you're doing to our environment when there is everything available. I've read it on the internet, in the newspapers, it's readily available to Duke Energy as it is to me, so I won't reiterate that. It's available to you, for heaven's sakes, use it. We can use solar, we can use wind, just as Duke Energy and ladies have said. This is just a case of deja vu all over again. Why are we repeating this? Why are they asking for more money when you've already been told no? It's enough, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a statement to the commission?
Just on this way, the testimony about to give this case with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, John.
So help me God.
Would you state your name and address for the record?
David Waters, W R T T E R S, 145 September Embers Drive, Franklin, North Carolina. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and girls, distinguished guests. I'm an electrical engineer, Georgia Tech, specialty in power distribution. I'm also a World War II veteran. I have to swear on this very same Bible that I would defend and protect this nation. I review and I consider this rate increase to be a regressive tax on the people of North Carolina. It hits the poor and the middle class. It's unconscionable. It's unconscionable. Now, if you look at the growth of solar energy in North Carolina, you'll find that in Clay County and parts of Cherokee County, there are something in the order of eight to 10 solar farms. Why are there none in Macon County? Quite simply, Duke Energy controls the power in Macon County. Blue Ridge Mountain Electric controls that energy in Clay County and parts of Cherokee County. In my study of the situation, I find that, that there is an effort of Duke Energy to diminish and to frustrate the building of renewable energy sources in North Carolina. I think Duke Energy has a responsibility in the social contract much more than its stockholders. I think it's important that Duke Energy not raise the rates in North Carolina, but rather eat it out of their own resources. It can be done. I spent 40 years in the Washington DC area. I know how politics work. Things are not always as they seem. I've been invited to speak before Congress. I've been invited to speak on NBC News on matters technical. And I implore you, do not raise the energy rates on the poor and middle-class people and on small businesses in North Carolina. Thank you.
Sure, one question. I believe you said if you're not, that Duke has frustrated the construction of solar facilities in Macon County.
There are no in Macon County. Doesn't that speak for itself?
Well, do you know what Duke has done to frustrate the efforts of those that would like to build a solar facility?
I would hope so. I happen to have a farm in Clay County and have signed a contract for a solar farm on my property over there. And I'm proud of efforts that have been made to provide renewable energy in North Carolina. Interestingly enough, by the way, one would encourage people to have solar energy and wind energy devices on their private homes and provide that energy for their homes. However, it is really not practical for persons that have solar and wind energy at their homes to provide energy to the national grid. The equipment necessary to do that is quite prohibitive, much more than what it would take to power their home or their farm. Furthermore, it's dangerous to the people who are linemen on Duke Energy to have power being fed back into life. As you will recall, another Georgia Tech engineer by the name of Jimmy Carter made an executive decree that persons should have the right to put power back into the grid from their homes. Again, with all due respect to our president, that is really not practical. The practical way is to have solar farms, megawatts that go directly into the three-phase power grid.
So is this something that Blue Ridge, I didn't, Clay County is doing to help reduce solar power that Duke here in Macon County is not?
The evidence is obvious. There are no solar arrays, no solar farms in Macon County. There are none.
It speaks for itself. Say thank you for coming. Appreciate you coming.
Anyone else to make a statement?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you coming out and breaking the weather. We'll adjourn the hearing. Thank you very much.